The following program is an original production of WICC PBS Chicago.
Many Americans maintain that racism is dead. Those who support this claim of a post-racial society offer some compelling examples. The most often cited, indisputable proof of our progress, is the election of Barack Obama, the first president of color. But other evidence consistently disputes the claim that racism is dead. Genocide, violence, war, inequality, exploitation, slavery, and many other societal issues have race and racism as a key component or detonator. For the next hour, we will all engage in a very open, honest, and hopefully frank conversation that you don't often get to hear on broadcast television. I'm Robert Jordan, and welcome to Colorblind: Rethinking Race, a Town Hall Meeting. Joining us today: Akila Griffin, a youth from Voice; Oscar Chacon, executive director of the NALAC, Nalac; Dr. Carol Adams, president of the Doucable Museum; Dr. Carolyn Lopez, president of the Chicago Board of Health; Terrence Young, director of commercial real estate for the Urban Partnership Bank; Jesse Ruiz, vice president of the Chicago Board of Education; Judge William Hooks of the Circuit Court of Cook County; Sean Healy, civic learning and engagement scholar of the McCormick Foundation; Ms. Luz Benitez Delgado, deputy director for the WK Kellogg Foundation; and Pepe Vargas, executive director of Chicago International Latino Cultural Center. Ladies and gentlemen, welcome. We will focus our conversation on four main areas affected by racism or racial issues: education, health, wealth, and criminal justice. Now, some people would say that education is where it all begins. So, let's start by looking at this brief clip from the WICC PBS Chicago and Middle Passage Co-production, Colorblind: Rethinking Race.
The promise of education as the ticket to a better life remains out of reach for many. Black schoolchildren are likely to have the least qualified teachers attend under-resourced schools, and they are far more likely to be suspended, held back, or expelled than white students. Across the country, zero tolerance has sent suspension rates skyrocketing. African-American children are especially hard hit. Not only are they four times more likely to be suspended, their punishments are harsher than whites or Latinos.
Zero tolerance program is a serious, serious, serious thing going on right now, and kids are getting dropped out, kids are getting, you know, pushed out of school and everything, and we want to take it and we want to do something about it.
In Chicago, the disparity in suspensions is glaring. African-Americans make up 45% of students, but receive 76% of suspensions.
We are fighting for our lives. It is serious. You can determine what the direction of education is in Chicago.
When I started elementary school, most of my friends in the early years actually were black kids. We were being treated profoundly unequally. They were being disproportionately punished, even though we were all breaking the rules the same. They were being tracked into the remedial level classes, and the white kids were being tracked into the upper level classes.
It sends a very powerful message to our kids when they think that systems are purposely lined up against them and that those systems are arbitrary. If we're going to address racial disparities in discipline, then by definition, we're going to have to talk about race.
Well, you've heard that clip from our program tonight that we'll be referring to throughout the evening. I'd like to start off with zero tolerance and suspension rates. African-American children are four times more likely to be suspended from school. Let's start with Jesse Ruiz. Jesse, would you like to address that?
Sure. It is an unfortunate fact that that is the case, and just this past year, the Chicago School Board did address and revise its code of conduct. It's something that we're continuing to track, and we have to be more vigilant about monitoring to say, simply because we have a school district that is comprised of more than 90% students of color, there should be some proportionality in the outcomes of that imposition of our code of conduct. You shouldn't have a overwhelming majority of those students who are subject to discipline under that being students of color. And so, we're now beginning to track that and monitor that, making sure if there are incidences where it seems that it's being applied unfairly, that we address it.
Judge Hooks, what do we do when we understand that some students may have committed infractions, yet we know that sometimes a student who is suspended may not come back?
The problem was one of leadership. When a student is forced out of school one year, within two or three years, at least within a decade, I'll see them in the criminal division. My colleagues will see them in the juvenile division. Educators and policymakers don't realize how important it is for children to be able to negotiate their way through grade schools and high schools. At least 90% of the young men and women that I see, and not-so-young men and women I see in the criminal division at 26, the Leighton Building at 26 in California, are people that were not able to negotiate through the Chicago public school system. One of the problems is those that are in charge of the school system have no skin in the game, no offense to you, but they need to be able to have gone through public schools themselves. Grammar schools, high schools, skin in the game counts. My training has been in the Marine Corps. I never asked my men and women to do anything I couldn't do. So, when you sit back from something and your own kids are not in that system, you're doing this from an intellectual point of view. We need community-based schools. We need people that are vested in leaderships in the grade schools, the high schools. We need to know that when you lock that young black man out of that grade school, that high school, he's going to end up locked up years later. And then, some judge is going to say, "Well, you know, we expected this. He didn't even graduate from high school, grade school." We need black males in grade school, high school. That's not to say that black females have not done a great job. We need Hispanic males and Hispanic females vested in a system that actually went through those systems, who are not just coming in for the intellectual issues involved, and they want to be able to say they're a public service. They need to have gone through those systems, and they need to have seen the good and the bad. So that Dr. Bell out here doesn't see him later on on the psychiatry side of the house. I don't see him later on the criminal justice side of the house. We need to have skin in the game, and we need to just be real about this, because if we don't do that, we're creating generations and generations of African-Americans, Hispanics that will never be able to be where they need to be, in spite of all these laws.
Well, you know, I appreciate what Judge Hooks just said, but I would argue that every Chicagoan has skin in the game in our school system, regardless of where you were educated, public, private, parochial, otherwise, we all have skin in the game. And so, because again, as you mentioned, we're all paying taxes that can either educate students, or we could triple that amount that we're paying to incarcerate students. And as a taxpayer, I don't want to, I think it's a much wiser investment to spend much more of our dollars on educating them than incarcerating them later on, because that is the statistic, that 80% of our population plus, imprisoned, did not graduate high school. And so, you don't have to be a great statistician to see the correlation. And so, we all have skin in the game in that, and appreciate that that can't be the outcome, that we can't be putting our students out. We've got a mission to educate them, and we've got to fulfill that mission. And every Chicagoan has a stake in that matter, and they should all help, because it's not going to get done with seven members of the school board or all these 26,000 teachers who are there every day. It's going to take, you know, the millions of Chicagoans in Chicagoland to do that job.
I just have to have a little minute worth of that zero tolerance, because I have an issue about zero tolerance when it comes to kids in our schools. And I think for most of us, if we look at our own lives, if there had been a zero tolerance policy, we would all have been put out of school. Who didn't have an incident at some time in school? Who didn't have a fight at some time in school? The response then was not to suspend you. It was in fact to give you more school. The idea that if you're having problems at school, you should be put out of it, is just diametrically opposite to what should happen. What happened to come early and stay late, be engaged in more school? Let's look at more ways to engage you, rather than to see you as the enemy. And frankly, some schools prefer to put children who cause them some problems out of school, because they don't want to have to deal with the challenges of thinking about, "How am I going to reach this kid? What am I going to do? How am I going to change my approach?" So I think that that's also the basis for some of this. They're dealing with so many issues for which we are not adequately preparing them. So whatever we've got available, we need to use it.
Mr. Ruiz, I want to come back to you for a moment. One of the things that comes out in this documentary is that black and Hispanic students are treated more harshly than white students when it comes to suspensions and punishments that are given out. Now, I don't know if this is something CPS can do. Is there some type of policy issue, or do we have to somehow frame this in a societal standpoint that this word gets out? How do we deal with that?
Sure. And that is true, that our student code of conduct is implemented by human beings, and human beings all have biases, and do they impact how they apply those rules at times? I'm sure it does. And thus, we're monitoring it more carefully to make sure when we see statistically that something looks a little off, then we need to intervene and say, we need to look closely at how a certain school or a certain school leader is implementing those rules, and going further, so that we make sure that it's not just about discipline. You know, the great students from Voice, I met with several times in the course of our revising the student, and they were promoting programs like Restorative Justice, that Principal Dozier is using out at Fanger High School, to make sure that she's not just putting students out on the street, that she's got a duty, and she does a great job of it, of making sure those students are there with her. She wants the tools of that code of conduct that allows her that if it's very difficult, she can put some students out, that that's a last resort. But she's working with those students to resolve conflict before it becomes a bigger problem, and before she's putting students out, because her job is to graduate those students and educate them, and not to punish them out of school.
All right. We're going to come to an audience question, but first, before we do that, I wanted to come to Carolyn Lopez on this health issue, dealing with this whole concept, the fact that there is an emotional and psychological impact that is experienced by many of these students. Once they've been expelled, they feel less than normal, and sometimes suffer depression or other issues which may prevent them from going back.
Well, there are a lot of factors at play. There is a certain degree of shame, and that should not be underestimated. Certainly, depression is a significant issue that is often, too often, under-identified in our children. And the resources that are available within the school system to help those children are too often, either not there at all, or certainly inadequate at best. There are so many other issues that play into this, and we'll get into it a little later, but some of these kids are coming to school hungry. And that plays a role in all of this as well. And just looking at the kid and the behavior and saying, "Well, that's the problem. Let's get rid of them," that's not the answer.
Let's move to the audience here. We have someone here at the microphone who's going to ask a question. Please state your name and give us your question, please.
Hi, my name is Lillian. I'm a student here, and I wanted to know, or shall I say, why is it that most of the schools that are predominantly white have more activities than black schools have? And why do, I have to agree with what you said about come early and stay late. Why is it that the teachers now seem to beat the students out of the school when the bell rings? I don't understand that. And that's one of the problems that some of the black children have when they feel like the teachers don't care. They're only there for a paycheck. Why should they have to learn?
Go ahead and take a stab at that. Funding is supposed to be equal throughout the city for all students on a per pupil basis. And then, the principals get a fair amount of funding that they can use on a discretionary basis, so in each building, that principal can make decisions. That said, I'm aware that there are a number of schools that have their own separate endowment funds, because the families are able to augment what the taxpayers of Chicago and the state of Illinois and the federal government is able to give the schools to operate. And so, that does happen, and we have to address that going forward, about making sure we have, frankly, a better state and federal funding mechanism and our own taxpayer dollars to better equalize for that and provide those resources, so that everybody truly has an equal opportunity and, you know, have us all the support systems. And frankly, some of the schools that have a greater concentration of students living in poverty, they need more resources, not just equally resources. They need more. And so, on our teachers, with regard to our teachers, I mean, I respect our teachers. They do a very difficult job, either some who are more dedicated than others, like any profession, I'm sure there are, but that's another reason why, you know, the mayor and the school board fought for longer time. Everybody's got to be there for a longer time, frankly, that we think it needs to do the job of educating our students for a 21st century economy.
There are opportunities for other kinds of partnering and collaborations and foundation dollars to put in particular kind of programs, and that the attention needs to be paid to need and where need exists, and allocating resources according to that. With respect to teachers beating the students out the door, I think we frankly got some teachers that don't like kids. Okay? And my philosophy is it's more important to love who you teach than what you teach. And it's communicated to young people what you feel about them, and what you care about them, and what your expectations are. And there are low expectations sort of running amok when it comes to our children in these schools.
Thank you, Dr. Adams. Thank you for that question in the audience. Before we get, we're going to come back to this whole topic of education, but I want to move on to our next topic, which is health. And nearly half of African-American adults suffer from a chronic disease compared to 39% of the general population. Now, this is discussed in our documentary that we're seeing tonight, so let's take a look at this next segment here on tape.
Further evidence of culturally accepted injustice is seen in the health disparities of African-Americans. Nearly half of African-American adults suffer from chronic disease compared to 39% of the general population. Blacks are less likely to have health insurance, access to quality care, or proper nutrition. They suffer with higher rates of diabetes and obesity, and are more likely to die from cancer and heart disease. Many of these conditions are directly related to diet. The poorer the diet, the more likely the risk of poor health. Today, 400,000 Chicagoans live in food deserts, neighborhoods without fresh, healthy food options.
Chicago has had a long history of segregation, and in Chicago, the food desert is primarily African-American.
Food is medicine. Bottom line is, what's so profound for me is that diabetes, cardiovascular disease, and cancer prevention are rooted in intervention and healing happening in the body.
You go, girl.
Food can actually prevent and intervene in all three of these illnesses. And if we make eating healthy something that the family shares, friends shares, something that a community shares, then we begin to transform.
But eating healthy isn't just a matter of personal choice. The ability to get healthy food is also dependent on access and affordability.
There are communities that can afford to have a Whole Foods or another kind of supermarket, and another community has to have a Super Value, or Save-A-Lot, or shop at a drugstore in order to get their groceries. Their food system is fragile.
Well, we just heard that whole segment there talk about what it looks like in a food desert. You don't have to drive far from where we are tonight to find some neighborhoods where there are no drugstores, cleaners, filling stations, let alone shopping centers, and there are many neighborhoods like that. So, Dr. Carolyn Lopez, you mentioned that many kids go to school hungry in the morning if we are in the midst of one of these food deserts. That just perpetuates the whole idea that it's going to make it more difficult for kids to be well-nourished when they enter the school.
Without question. And what's being addressed in the documentary certainly, and what is true, is that it's not just to have food, it's what kind of food do you have available to you. We have gained a deeper appreciation of the role of nutrition in preventing some of the diseases that we currently see in epidemic proportion. There's no question that the studies are very clear. Where there is proximity to a source of fresh food, there is lower obesity. Where there is more proximity to fast food and less to the fresh foods, you have much higher incidence of obesity. Obesity, we know, is, you know, a gateway problem to many more types of problems, including diabetes and cardiovascular disease, and we're seeing it at a much younger age.
Oscar Chacon, you are well-versed in what's going on in Hispanic community. You've seen many areas which are very much the same as you can find in African-American communities, where kids go to school in the morning without an adequate breakfast or even the possibility of having lunch. How is this affecting communities where you have been in and out of?
Well, it's pretty sad, I mean, to see early in the morning, either in a bus or in a train, and to actually see a kid having a pop, you know, as opposed to a glass of milk in the morning, or having, you know, corn chips rather than having, you know, something healthier, I mean, to eat. And I think this is all correlated, I mean, because we are talking about issues that cannot really be made sense of if you deal with them on an isolated basis. You know, we began talking about the question of discipline in the school. And sadly, we live in a society that is pretty obsessed, you know, with punishment. And when you combine, you know, punishment with the lack of access to good food, and later on, we'll talk about wealth, all these issues are so intimately related. I mean, to the extent that we can improve, you know, the access to health generation within our own communities, to the extent that we can improve indeed access to good education to everybody, I mean, I think that we are going to also see over time a much more careful attention given to questions of nutrition. There is absolutely no doubt of the fact that, you know, whether it is African-Americans or Hispanic communities, or low-income, you know, communities in general, we do suffer of lack of access to the kind of food that can make our communities be healthy now and of course be healthy in the future.
Okay, thank you so much. Now, we are receiving information from social media outlets. We get information, we've asked people to contact us either via Facebook or Twitter, and we have a question here. Is urban farming a safe way for communities to control of food supplies? And is anybody providing proper training to minorities? Would like to address that.
There are a few of these projects going on right now in Chicago, in various communities, in Inglewood and other places. Everything good grows in Inglewood is one of them. There are a few others where folk are really taking a look at it, and as well as encouraging people to do projects in vacant lots, to try to grow food on their own and what have you. So I think it's a great response. I think we also need to have a little bit more activism regarding the quote "food and liquor stores" that are located in our communities. Okay? They make a fortune. Okay? So it's not that a regular food store is not located in the community because people are spending money. People are buying food. People are eating food. You know, those are some opportunities, but these stores exist, sometimes two or three of them in a block, in an urban inner-city community, and they utilize a link program and other things, and engage in a number of activities that are negative to the community, and sell things that are very detrimental to the community. But you see, very little active regulation, even though it's commonly known what's going on in those stores.
If I can add on to this, because everything that's been said is absolutely on target from the urban farming on, but I think there are some important steps that are being taken now relative to making food more available, to taking care of the problem of the food desert. I mean, as part of the city plan for a healthy Chicago, the goal, which I think is pretty aggressive, is by 2015 to have only 200,000 people in a food desert by 2020, to have nobody in a food desert in the city. That's very important, and it's being done through encouraging urban agriculture, through encouraging mobile food carts that...
It's pretty exciting.
It's very exciting, actually, that bring food. Even working with the retailers that you're talking about, there's initiatives that are coming from the federal level, but are starting to come down to the state level and at the state and city level, to work specifically with the retailers on how to purchase and stock fresh produce, how to manage it, how to manage the wages involved with the store itself.
Well, that's very important, and I might add that some of those food carts that you were talking about have chefs and owners who cook their food right here at Kennedy King and the Culinary School, a couple of them. But just before we go to our audience question, Akila Griffin, you're the youngest person here on our panel, so I wanted to ask you, you're the closest to someone who may know people in school. Are there kids going hungry that you went to school with who may have had it tough in trying to get a meal?
I see it every day when I go to school, kids who go around and ask other people for their lunches, or if they can, someone, if you can go to breakfast and get them an extra cereal, because they didn't have anything to eat this morning. And I know specifically at my school, I'm a junior at Diet High School, we have Chicago Botanic funded a garden on the side of our school. So, we grow food and sell produce to the people in the neighborhood, and we also sell it to various restaurants around our neighborhood. So, it is possible, and we want to, we had a plan for our school, the Barnes &amp; Noble Global Achievers Village, where we want to turn our school into a diet of green and technology, leadership in green and technology. So, therefore, it will be funded where everyone could learn how to do these things, so it could be further expanded. So I see it every day.
Good. And we have someone in the audience. Please step up to microphone, give us your name and state your question, please.
Hello, my name is Miosha Thomas. One of the panelists commented about having skin in the game and that Chicagoan taxpayers have an invested interest on what's economically sound, but what's happening in communities of color actually disproves that comment. It's not economically sound to have food deserts when you have so many people uninsured and taxpayers are paying for their ailments and their medication and things like that. It's Chicagoan taxpayers that aren't restricting these food and liquor places. It's despairing to have so many in such a small area. Every block, there is a food and liquor store in a neighborhood of color. Why is that?
Terrence, you want to start off with that? When we're talking about community development and some of the issues where we see these transformations taking place in communities?
Sure, Bob. You know, it's really interesting, commenting on that and commenting on the kids and the food, you know, you have to be a certain age to buy alcohol or to buy cigarettes, but you can buy all the sugar and fat that you want, okay? And you see that perhaps not just with the kids, but with all ages. And certainly, in the community development arena, communities have to play a role, people have to play a role in determining what their community is going to look like. We have elected officials, and we need to hold our elected officials accountable, but I think it starts with our own personal involvement with our communities to determine what we want our communities to look like. You know, because if there's a liquor store in our community, well, to put it like this, but one way you perhaps get that liquor store out of the community is to tell people, "Don't patronize that particular store." Or you own the property, you control the property upfront by investing in your community, which is going to tie into one of our other topics.
That's right, and we're going to tie into that topic right now. We're going to come back out to our audience in just a second, but you're talking about this whole issue of wealth, and how wealth can be transforming for a community. This topic was, of course, addressed in the documentary, and let's take a listen to this clip right now.
I think wealth is maybe the most important issue that we can look at when we think about racial inequality.
Historically, the most common way to build wealth is to purchase a home.
Buy the home. If that home increases in value over what you paid for it, that's the wealth that's being created in the home.
It's supposed to be a benefit, but I don't see the benefit right now.
Karen McCormick believes she was doing a good thing when she found a home for her and her son.
I bought the house in 2002. I acquired the house under market, very good price.
Karen's bank gave her a loan for the home of her dreams. She would soon learn that her loan was not conventional. The mortgage was subprime. Karen's loan came with terms and conditions that would place her homeownership in jeopardy.
The shameful...
The shameful history of the subprime lending spree is that it was very discriminatory. When we look at the communities that have been hardest hit, it is people in the African-American community and the Latino community.
According to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, subprime loans are five times more likely in black neighborhoods than in white neighborhoods.
Subprime loans became popular because there was an inordinate amount of money to be made.
Money made by mortgage professionals who earned higher commissions from subprime loans, many designed to take advantage of black and Latino homeowners.
In fact, if you were African-American earning more than $100,000, you were more likely to be put into a subprime loan than if you were white and earning less than $35,000 a year. Just outrageous.
You know, this is a really, really interesting part of this whole dilemma of how we transform neighborhoods, how we empower people, and of course, wealth creation is part of it. We're talking about wealth creation here when you hear in this clip that so far away from wealth creation is just the ability sometimes to survive. Who here wants to start us off talking about this whole issue of buying homes, holding on to homes, the growth that we've seen and the problems in our communities with, if you'd like to go with that, Terrence Young?
No, I can talk about this an all-day long. I've lived it in so many ways as a banker and as an investor in a community, but, you know, as the video shows, you know, for most Americans, historically, you acquired wealth through owning property, primarily homeownership. With the economic downturn, that wealth in the community, especially disparate amount of wealth, got lost, wiped out. I mean, just boom, it's gone in African-American Hispanic communities across the country. It's just gone. And so you have to try to look and see, well, what happened? And you have to ask yourself, well, would you advise a person today to become a homeowner, given what happened? I still would advocate that homeownership is still a great way to acquire wealth, but you have to be smarter about it. And certainly, the video talked about subprime lending, but there was another aspect lending that was even worse than subprime. It was called predatory lending. Well, it preyed on minorities, it preyed on the elderly, and there wasn't any regulation to deal with it, to stop it. So a lot of people, long before there was an economic downturn, people were losing their equity, losing their wealth way before that. And so this whole concept of educating people about wealth, it's got to start with our kids. It needs to start in the public school system. You know, kids, we need to be educated about wealth, about investing, about savings. All of those things play a role, and all those things play a role in how we even fund education. The wealth of a community helps to fund education. So protecting that wealth has got to be one of our major, one of our top priorities. Educating people about wealth and what wealth is needs to be one of our top priorities. And it'll help us, it's spilling over, Bobby, spilling over into society in so many ways, in violence, education, jobs. We need to create more jobs. You know, you can create more jobs if you're investing in your community, and if you have investment in your community, if you have jobs in your community, we would not have seen as much of an economic downturn, we would not have seen as much of a loss in homeownership because a lot of people lost their homes simply because they lost their jobs. The jobs went away. You can't pay for, you can't pay your mortgage, you can't pay your rent if you don't have a job.
Well, we've seen this, and let me move to this other side here for a second. McCormick Foundation has done quite a bit to try and involve civic groups in its civic work as well. How do you see this whole issue of wealth building in communities?
If I could pick up the piece about financial literacy in education, about wealth acquisition, there's a brand-new initiative, and I commend Jesse Louise, the Chicago Public Schools has initiated, called the Global Citizenship Initiative. And part of this entails a senior-year financial literacy course, and the opposite semester is a civics course. And I would suggest this, this issue is intimately tied to the civic health of a community. We were talking earlier about schools. What we know is there's a dearth of high-quality civic learning opportunities in our urban schools, and our schools are attended disproportionately by students of color, and it's then no surprise that as you walk away from looking like me, white, middle-class, college-educated, male, you're less likely to participate in our democracy. So the dearth of opportunities in our schools really leads to adverse consequences for our society. And the interesting piece is there's some emerging research that suggests the civic health of a community supports the economic health of the community. So if you look at this most recent recession, cities that are civically healthy, neighborhoods that are civically healthy, had much lower rates of unemployment. And I would tie that back, I think our most promising lever is still our schools, and there's responsibility to prepare our young people for civic life, and certainly, responsibility to prepare our young people to make wise financial decisions.
I just want to get to this one point. There's an interesting statistic talking about this whole issue of communities, and Judge, I'd like to pose it to you. Out of the 40,000 or so ex-offenders who come out of our system each year, the vast majority go into six, six zip codes here in the Chicago area. And these are people who are not supposed to associate with ex-offenders. These are people who are, many have felonies and can't get jobs, and who are behind the eight ball when they come out, yet they are trying, many of them, but, so, it's a tremendous problem. Judge, what would you say about how do we build a community when such a concentration of disadvantaged people is thrown in there?
Well, the problem is, is that in urban areas, the use of African-Americans has been, has expired. We don't have manufacturing, we don't have slavery anymore. So when you allow kids to drop out of grade school and high school, because you don't have, and let me explain the skin in the game situation. Skin in the game, to me, means vested, being vested in these children more than economically. White folks owned slaves. They were vested in them, but they didn't feel them, they didn't care about how they did, other than pulling the mule down the way. So it's more, when you're vested in something, you put your own kids in it because you're vested in it. Police that live in the community are more concerned about the safety in the community than the police that come in from the borders of the city, which barely make them legal, they're on the borders, they could care less about these young folks they deal with in the community. So when I say vested, that's what I mean, I don't mean economically. I mean, we've been owned as black people since we got here, so that's side picture. What can we do? We need manufacturing because our kids dropped out of grade school, high school, because they were forced out. We need jobs, we need employers who realize that just because this child was arrested and has quote a record because of the types of laws that we have, extended sentencing for minor drug offenses, that of course he has or she has this record. We do as much as we can with expungements, but we are giving, we are stigmatizing generations of youth, and then we complain because they keep getting in the system. But we don't have jobs to give them. I mean, when I look at them, I, you know, I'm saying, I wish I had new people in industry that could hire you, but we don't have industry in Chicago. We don't have industry around Chicago. Of course, you're destined to go back out there, and the police know that if they, every, I have police testify every day, while we're in the high-crime area, I said, what are you talking about, City Hall? What do you mean high-crime? You talking about, are you talking about down there where the guys are selling cocaine from the stock, the stock market down there? What is it, Exchange down on Jackson in La Salle? Every city, every, in every city in Chicago, every street in Chicago has had crime. The difference is where it gets enforced. Zero tolerance is zero tolerance in African-American Hispanic communities, is not zero tolerance in those other schools. The same thing with policing on the street. We're zero tolerance in Inglewood, and we're zero, that's what we say, but we're not zero tolerance in these other places, we're just not. We need jobs, we need employers who take chances with people who have these minor cases, and minor cases include felonies now because of the way the structure of the laws are. It doesn't mean that you have an integrity problem, it doesn't mean that if given a chance, you're not going to rehabilitate yourselves. It means that half the people you see successful today, like Dr. Adam said, if it was zero tolerance, they wouldn't be where they were supposed to be. So I want an equal playing field for blacks, whites, and Hispanics, and once we have that even playing field, everybody can advance the same.
All right, let's go to our first row here in the audience and see if we have any comments from our, Dr. Carl Vel there.
You know, it's interesting because there are more poor white people in the city of Chicago per capita, per absolute numbers than poor black people. The difference is, poor white people have scattered-site housing. So poor white people have access to food, there is an absence of liquor store in their communities. The other serious issue is a biological one. The leading cause of speech and language, learning disorders, attention deficit, and mild mental retardation, which is all over education and corrections, is fetal alcohol syndrome. Now, we know that in the black community, you've got hair care, nail parlors, ribbon-chicken shacks, payday loan stores, black churches, and liquor stores. So if you go into the schools and you look at the number of children who can't learn, who have behavioral problems in the detention center, fetal alcohol syndrome is a major driver of this problem for criminal justice, for education. But nobody's aware of that, and unfortunately, it's a rather huge problem.
One of the things, Pepe Vargas, as someone who works in the film industry, many of our perceptions are couched in what we see in film or on television, and as a filmmaker, and how can we deal with these perceptions to try and get the broader public to understand some of these issues that we're dealing with?
I will encourage my fellow panelists, the audience and the viewer, to think that we are in a multiracial nation, give or take more than 300 million, dominated by one race, that has created the 50% of the population totally deprived of the process and participation. They do not vote. All the problems that we are addressing and mentioning are the result of this mismanagement of this little group that is not a majority, by the way, the white population, that even can't afford to have a black president. They created 70% of the obesity in this country. They create 21 million youth out of school, drop out, where they go? To jail. Let's think globally, how can we, and we preach to be the most powerful nation in the country, Chicago is a microscope, and all the problems that we are addressing and talking about happens everywhere in the world. Even the, again, we say, man's best friend is a statistic, even the dogs in the United States, 50% of the dogs are obese. That is the nation that we have, and that is the nation, we are in the election mood, how can these issues can be a part of the agenda? We are going to have a new president, either re-elected or a new. How they can really, or the question, how can we afford to have 21 million people out of school who had the chance, and 70% of its population obese? Naturally, they are, for the great part, non-white.
And let's get a question from our audience. Sir, state your name and your question.
Yes, sir. G2 Brown, Kenwood Oakland Community Organization. I just wanted to share a concern, if I could. I think what we also have to talk about, and this is being alluded to here, is that people profit off of poverty. There's a lot of money made off the disenfranchisement of different communities. Unfortunately, the most precious institution in our neighborhood, education, is now ripe for that profit. Your school closings and school turnarounds does not improve education, but actually makes it worse, correlates with our lived experience. But because it's African-American, Latino children, and the public school system has not served them right for decades, as opposed to addressing the inequities that exist. For example, at Lakeview High School, a neighborhood high school, you could throw a rock from Lakeview to Mayor Rahm Emanuel's house, if you've got a good arm. And Diet High School, which Akila attends, Lakeview, they have two neighborhood schools. Lakeview has 18% white enrollment, Diet has 99% African-American enrollment. Lakeview has 12 advanced placement classes, Diet has none. Last year, Diet had no art teacher. Lakeview has darkroom, they have advanced sculpture, they have all types of options for their young people, and they should have those options. But I'm raising this issue with the school board, that as opposed to addressing those structural inequities, we continue with the policy that has a long shelf life, but it's failed. So our children are instruments of profit for institutions like the Academy of Urban School Leadership, which gets a million dollars per year per school off of our children.
We're going to have to wrap you up here because we're a little tight on time. Thank you, there were some wonderful points you raised. But the next issue I want to get to is that of criminal justice, and that is addressed here in our documentary as well, so let's take a look at our next segment.
I view the criminal justice system as a primary engine for sustaining racial inequality in the United States.
In theory, the law is colorblind, but in practice, the law is very color-conscious.
Today, there are more African-American adults under correctional control, in prison or jail, on probation or parole, than were enslaved in 1850, a decade before the Civil War began.
If you look at the arrest and conviction rates, it appears as though people of color are the main people involved in using, abusing, distributing drugs, and it's just simply not true.
We have to tell our young black men, when they leave the comfort of their homes, to be careful and to not take for granted that a person won't treat them as a criminal when they're not doing anything wrong.
And they soon get the message that sooner or later, one way or the other, no matter if you stay in school and follow the rules or don't, you're going to be thrown to the pavement.
Keep your hands visible, don't talk back, do whatever they say now and hope that you can get it thrown out of court later because it's not worth dying over.
It's impossible for me, as a mother, to protect my son from the police, and that hurts me to say. My son should be able to live in this space where he can drive down the street and not worry that someone's going to pull him over because he's black, search his car because he's black, find something that probably wasn't there to begin with because he's black, and maybe send him to prison because he's black. It's not fair.
Luce, let's talk to you, if we could, Luce Delgado, with the W.K. Kellogg Foundation. We don't hear as much as we probably should about the social organizations without which, I don't know what would be going on today. The nonprofit area, arena plays such a major role in services for our communities. Tell us about.
Well, at the W.K. Kellogg Foundation, our mission is to propel vulnerable children to success, and you cannot have a more vulnerable population than the children that have been incarcerated. We do a lot of fun grant-making in populations such as the juvenile justice system, with the education system, with creating cultural competency with our teachers, and we have great and excellent programs that really have done an exceptional job with the ex-offenders, which are seeming to be unemployable. You have a great program right here in Chicago, the North Lawndale Employment Network, who works with the police with their U-turn project, and the police themselves testify that they feel a new sense of policing because of the experiences that they have had in this program. And they've been able to reduce recidivism in their community by less than 5%. And that's a great accomplishment. So a lot of times, we have to take action in our communities as parents and as civically engaged, responsible citizens, and our responsibility at the Kellogg Foundation is to find those good programs that work for our children and that can be replicated in other areas.
Oscar Chacon, what about the immigrant population? We don't hear very much about it, but we know it's there, these are sometimes invisible people, but they have the same needs, the same issues, and are suffering under many of the same criminal justice areas. Many times, they are exploited because if they are here illegally, they can't even turn to the police for help.
But let me give you two figures. The second-largest population after African-Americans in the pre-enteral system in the U.S. happen to be Latinos. Every single night, we imprison 33,000 people, vast majority of them Latinos, Mexicans for the most part. We are absolutely right behind, you know, our African-American brothers and sisters when it comes to enduring the consequences of the laws that now drive, what I called earlier, I mean, this almost maniac tendency to punish. I mean, that is what is happening, whether it is, you know, punishing African-Americans or whether it is punishing immigrants, which by and large happen to be Mexican and other Latin-Americans. But I also want to get across one important message I think we have left out so far. But I also want to get across one important message I think we have left out so far. Whether it is education, health, wealth generation, or the incarceration of so many people, remember that our country is by far the biggest country incarcerating people in the whole world. Now, these things, sometimes we talked about them as if they are just the result of poor individual judgment. These issues are the result of many laws that we have passed as a country, and many laws that we have let die. And it's important to remember that there is a public law context to all of this. I mean, why is it that during the years between 1935 and 1975, we saw the greatest possible generational wealth very much spread through what we know as the middle class? It was not an accident. It was not a question of personal choice. It was the result of laws that were passed, and we need to get organized better to make sure that laws indeed support a much healthier path for our community.
Oscar, there are some communities where actually the number of prisons are built based upon the number of students who don't graduate from school.
Absolutely.
They know, they have a formula in the computer that said, okay, well, we don't graduate this number of kids. They know, just like Judge Hook said, they're going to end up in a criminal justice system.
And it's even worse if you take into account that two of the largest companies now driving prisons happen to be private corporations. You know, Corrections Corporations of America, and the Geo Group, advertising in Wall Street and in Business Week, as important companies to keep an eye, if you want to make money investing. This really is terrible.
And your Black citizens are investing in those companies.
Absolutely.
And I think that's important to know, too. I think we also have to talk about who really benefits from these failed public policies, because there are people benefiting from them every day, making a lot of money on them. You know, in this state, we built more penitentiaries than anybody, quicker than anybody. And we were then welcomed into communities that had been sundown towns in the past, where they didn't even want to see a black or Latino person. But they love to see us when we're on the way to get locked up. We provided them a way to make it through a difficult economy. The farms were gone, the this is was gone, and you saw them out there with signs, you saw them in Springfield lobbying, "Give us a prison, give us a prison." Because they knew with the prison, everybody in there could work. Between the working, the contracts, and the whole business, everybody in those little towns got over.
That's right. So, now, yes.
And I totally agree with what you're saying. It's an insidious institutionalized racism. SB 1070, the more arrests you can make, I'm sure many prisons are going up in Arizona. It's an insidious institutional racist system.
Doctor Hook, I mean Judge Hook.
Kellogg Foundation, MacArthur Foundation, a number of foundations have stepped up, and I know they're working with the county, President Prentwick, concerning projects that we're starting to see some of the results of with respect to juvenile justice initiatives. It's just not enough foundations, but the foundations in this area are sensitive to the criminal justice issues. In fact, I'm working with President Prentwick on a number of her projects. But you're absolutely correct. We just, the federal government just purchased a prison from the state of Illinois, and the folks in that area are very happy, because as they said, the governor just said, there's going to be new jobs in that area. So instead of building something to make TVs or to make something for the home, they're building something that we're servicing in Chicago. Now, there's a community responsibility, though. It's not all that, it's a community responsibility. We have a responsibility as a community to make sure that young people realize the consequences of what they're doing from their own perspective and also from a community perspective. So there's no snitch policy that exists out there with some of those youngsters. That's not helpful at all, because if you're not going to snitch, that means that the next person that gets shot on that street is probably going to be your brother or sister. So we, as community leaders, have, it's not all the police, it's also us. And it's also those young folks that are showing up in these institutions that had other, even though they're out of school, it doesn't mean that you have to go crazy in the street.
All right, let's move back to our front row. The lady here on the seat, yes, ma'am?
Yes.
Your name, please?
My name is Brenda, and I work in a community, one of those six communities that you identified, where there's mass incarceration, the impact of incarceration is huge. In North Lawndale, 57% of the adults in our community have had some involvement with the criminal justice system. So we have responded, we're one of those nonprofits that Luz referenced, we've actually created a business to hire men and women with criminal backgrounds, because there was a lack of will from the general community, the manufacturing community, to even give these individuals the opportunity once they had served their time, right? And so to me, what we're talking about, this systemic institutional racism, is an overwhelming concept when you wonder, how do you really get to the bottom issue, which to me is around will? Because if we have decided that incarceration is a form of economic, an economic engine, right, then where is the will to really change systems? And I think it's amazing to me that we're just a small organization on the West Side that has decided not to connect to these larger systems, because they have abandoned us. And so we've actually had to create our own means by which to ensure that these people who have served their time have an opportunity to support their children and their families upon departure.
Okay, thank you. Let's take another audience question here at the microphone, please, sir. Step up, state your name.
My name, Carlos Easter. Why don't they put more money into schools than prisons?
That's a wonderful question. Let's let Jesse Ruiz talk about that.
I've been wanting to jump in here, because one of the things that's happening right now in Illinois is the governor's trying to close downtowns. And he's getting a tremendous pushback, that we're realizing we can't incarcerate our way out of our societal problems. And more importantly today, we can't afford it anymore, because it's, you know, you pay three times or almost four times as much to incarcerate somebody per year than to educate them. And so hopefully, folks will finally realize the return on investment is far greater on the front end than on the back end, and we can start closing down some of these prisons, and that's why President Prentwick, frankly, is moving on some of these initiatives to find alternatives to incarceration, because we can't afford it anymore as a community, as a city, as a county, as a state, as a nation. We can't afford to incarcerate, frankly, our future. And we've got to do, and that's frankly, we're sweeping aside our problems that we didn't address in educating our youth at the front end. And so hopefully, there'll be more of that state funding that was going to run prisons to take us from the 50th state in the nation for public support, for public education, to a little bit more in the middle. I mean, we are dead last in this nation in public support for public education. We fund ourselves through property taxes, which means your education is dependent on your zip code, and that is not right.
This is, we are unfortunately out of time, but we are going to continue this conversation after the program ends. But I just wanted to say that it is so important that everyone here has come this evening to share with us their thoughts and their feelings about some really critical issues that affect us all. Because if we all aren't living healthy, normal, productive lives, then it's going to affect us in one way or another. If some of us are living in misery, it's going to affect all of us. So we know that is the case, so it behooves us to try and find a way to come up with some answers for this. And we're going to keep working on this, and a program like this, and this documentary, are two good ways to show that we are looking at it. We just maybe feel that it's not happening fast enough. But thank you, and thanks to everyone for coming out tonight. We want to thank you, and also to those of you who are watching us from home. During his first campaign, President Barack Obama said, quote, "Race is an issue that I believe this nation cannot afford to ignore." This is the end of our program. However, it cannot be the end of our conversation. Until somebody listens, this is a conversation that must go on. So please join us online at wycc.org as we continue to talk about these important issues. I'm Robert Jordan, and thank you so much for joining us, and we'll see you next time.